It's something I'm trying to think of the inconvenience of these people, a lot of people uses that.
Through place private property.
Yeah, I know, but we could.
Or about right off of Waterloo Gap, where you at, where they come into the VDOT, the other end, sort of behind the big brain, would there be a place there that we could?
I'll bet it's on the VDOT.
It's awesome.
We don't own any property in that area.
Right, yeah. I just wonder if they'd let us move them to the other end temporarily until they get the fourth year.
That would be unfazed.
Okay. Thing about this, I mean, this is a recommendation from a committee and we need to go with it because, now, we can discuss it here, but I don't think maybe we should, because that committee has been working on this for a good while, trying to come up with some solutions on other issues too. But anyway, just throw that in there about what we could do, because it'll be an inconvenience for some people, but we may have to drive down toward Daniloone or, you know, go toward Antioch or something to, or wherever they gotta go to get rid of their trash. But that's a pretty busy site, isn't it, Bill? I mean, going to Mox Gap is pretty busy.
It's one of the busiest.
Yeah. So they gotta go someplace else to do that. It's gonna be an inconvenience for them for about a year, till this project down on Route 23 is done. But you're gonna have bumper to bumper traffic through there all locked, you know, with the one line on Route 23, so.
What's, what's gonna be the closest ones to them, Bill?
You'll have Mamble, Daniloone, and Antioch will be the closest ones.
And Hilton's, if you're coming back.
Yeah, Hilton's will be in Broad Sound.
Yeah. Anyway, the committee, I commend y'all, you know, that have done this and come up with this plan. I know you've done everything that you could, so I'm gonna go along with just what the committee recommends here. Do we need to vote on this, or is this just an announcement for each of you to do this?
You wouldn't need to vote on it. The board says the hours and days of operation for the community service.
Anyway, you see what they're dealing with here, it's not, it's not nobody's fault, it's just a product of, of, you know, getting Route 23 better, that's what it's a product of, and there's nothing we can do about it. So it's gonna be inconvenient for people driving through there, it's gonna be inconvenient for taking their trash, but we just gotta live with it for a while till we get, be a year of it, at least, to get through this, and hopefully the project is not like the bridge project down at, where it received, hope it's not. Anyway, if they get through by 24th of September next year, that'd be great if they can do that, be one year of it. Anyway, we'll, any other comments, or we'll vote on this.
Do you think it'd be doing good, of course, we'd have to move fence to talk to Donnie about moving the dumpsters out, like Jeremy said?
I could reach out to him, see what they say.
Would we, I hate not to have a fence, but if we could move them, maybe temporary, I don't know. It's gonna be inconvenient for a lot of these people that use it not to have it.
There's also a household pickup company in the county, Plinch River Trash Service.
Yes.
I know it's an expense, it's not very expensive, that people could utilize if they needed household pickup, that's not within the town limits, that's already paying for that service as well.
I don't wanna plug that company, I use them. It's $25 a month, and I'm telling you, it's forever worth it, sit the can out, it's gonna Monday morning of theirs, like clockwork, and it's not a, you know. So, not supposed to plug any business here, but it'd be something to help people, you know, to get their trash taken care of, they don't have to leave the house. All right. So we'll entertain a motion to, to do this, and hopefully to get out in the press, people will know that it's gonna happen, and I know it's gonna be an inconvenience, but we just have to live with it, and I don't think what else. I know the committee looked at everything they could to try to make as inconvenient as possible for the people using that site. So we need a motion, entertain a motion to, to close that site, either the, you said the 19th or the?
Or the 26th.
26th, okay.
They've already, well, they said this morning that the pre-construction is meetings in the morning, but if you've been that way, the last couple of days, there's been work going on by Estes Brothers.
Right.
So, I'm not sure, you know, if they'll actually do the line closure, I don't know how far out that's gonna go.
Have the folks there, once we decide to do this, I think we will, but let people know, put a sign that it will be closed, so they'll know that there'll be some take their trash, there ain't no place to put it. All right, we need a motion to approve this closure.
And if you'll include the date of the motion, that you want it closed?
Well, let's put it off as long as we can, if we got, do the 26th, it'll be fine. We'll get it out. 9/26.
9/26.
9/26.
9/26.
This is September.
This will be closed for a year, right?
Approximately. Hope it's not that long, but. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Terrible motion, do we have a second?
I don't think we have a choice.
I don't like it either, but I mean, I'm lost, we do.
I would like to see somewhere else if we can find another place. I don't, I don't think we've got a choice, whether the clothes are.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any more discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so unanimous, and so everybody, your phone be ringing like just some of us. All right, next item is 12B, the DMV grants, Ms. Horn.
I put those in your packet as well. The sheriff's office is now eligible again for DMV grants for selective enforcement, and there's three grants, one is $2,400, one is $18,000, and then the third one is also $2,400. So we just need authorization to accept the grants.
All right, do we have a motion to accept these, you've got selective grants, what you found?
DMV selective enforcement.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second, is there any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay. And aye on 12C.
That's also in your packet, is a letter from the town of Gate City, asking to use the Scott County parking lot that's located at the corner of West Jackson Street and Mamble Road, that's our parking lot there next to the courthouse. They would like to use that parking lot on Saturdays for food vendors, and the hours would be from 10 to 5.
Obviously, it'd be an issue of ours not using it all during the weekend, so it wouldn't affect anything if we ever go onto courthouse, so.
We just wanted the board to place it.
We're gonna get it right here in a second. All right, without a lot of discussion, we can't do one too, but motion to approve this agreement with Gate City to use that lot there beside the courthouse.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Terrell.
Mr. Bricky's made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right. Look, keep me.
Hey, your yellow sheet should be in your packet. Appropriate $10,000 to VTC DMO Wonder Love Marketing Grant, number 21-012, tourism 72600-5625, for a reimbursement received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And please appropriate $1,881,550 to Coronavirus Relief Funds, 32-11010, for monies received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And please appropriate $3,500 to Courthouse Maintenance Construction Fund, 9-43600-3330, for reimbursement received and deposited at the treasurer's office.
Okay.
Those are all the appropriations.
All right. Do we have a motion to make appropriations as described, Ms. Horn? So move, Mr. Chairman. How much did you made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And I do need, have one grant that we need to accept, and that is Virginia Department of Election Cares Act, 2020 grant funding for registrar's office. If accepted, please establish budget code for miscellaneous election supplies fund, 32-13200-6005. And please appropriate $55,264 for grant award received and deposited at the treasurer's office.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this grant award?
We'll move.
All right. Did you made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item is appointments, we have two appointments to be made on the EDA, Economic Development Authority, so, Ms. Penn, if you would.
You have three applications in your folder, if you want to get those out. Dennis Fritz, Lynn Fatsler, and John Dalton Ferguson have applied.
Okay. We'll do them separately, one at a time, we got two listed here, so the first, unexpired term, that is open, so do we have a motion for this one unexpired term?
We'll nominate Liam Fatsler.
Any nominations?
I'll make a motion, nomination sees, if you feel about acclamation.
Okay, we have a motion, nomination sees, vote back, nomination, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Herron, second, all fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, and the second one?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dennis Fritz, and wondering if I can make a comment?
You bet.
Okay, I, I've known Dennis several years, and he has been a businessman in Scott County for years. He had an insurance agency, he taught school, he's a graduate member of UVA Wise, his, his wife was a teacher in Scott County for years. Dennis is as knowledgeable about the business and the needs of Scott County as anybody I could, could name today. I think that he would be an excellent board member who would work very well with our current board, so I'd like to nominate Mr. Dennis Fritz.
Any other nominations?
I'll move the nomination, seats, and vote back, motion.
Do we have a motion to nominate the seats, vote back, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, all fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. So those two positions will be filled as, as you have requested. I think we're getting really, two very good candidates there for that, and it's, I know John Field will appreciate the people who've gone there that will be a part of it and help them. Most of them used to say something about what happened with two people that, that left the EDA. A lot of things, some things are happening, disclosure and stuff, it's, it happened, it's happening because of what happened in another county, because that bill's Scott County. And so, we tried to get good people that serve on these, on these boards, and so we had some good people that left because of the disclosures they had to make to stay on the boards, and I don't think it's really, they should have to do that to serve as a volunteer, get paid $0, but they felt like they'd rather disclose, all that, they had to disclose, so they just resigned from the board. And so, anyway, I talked to, I did talk to one in particular, and I, I hate it, because we have good people. And so, anyway, anytime that you volunteer for a board, you gotta do all the disclosures. And what happened, happened in Warren County, I mean, there was, there was some serious stuff went on there. And so, anyway, our, I think our county is well represented on that board, which, you know, I think we have a good director there to take care of business in. But having business people and people business minded on the Economic Development Authority is so important, because this is one of the top boards in the county, we appoint people to, and so we're blessed to have one we have. I'm sure Mr. Fritz and Ms. Fatsler will do great on it, they'll be direct replacements of what we, of what we need. All righty. Thank you, Senator. County Attorney Allen, Ms. Kegler.
I have two things to ask you about today. We need to make some updates to the procurement ordinance, so I'd ask for authorization to advertise public care for that. And also, we need to probably extend our COVID-19 emergency ordinance. We had language in there that it would last no longer than six months, and that's November, I think, but I think we could probably be wise to go ahead with it and then make it effective for as long as it needs to be, and not have to do it again, but if I could.
Does it, does that normally end in December, or is that what, put out originally?
Oh, six months.
It'd be November, six months from April, May.
I see, I'm second.
So if I could have authority for those two ordinances, probably do them separate.
All right, on the procurement ordinance, and allow her to advertise this, is that correct?
For public care, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so to allow her to do that, so need a motion to allow the county attorney to do that.
I'll make that motion.
All right. This group made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. The COVID-19 that we did, it was six months, it will be, won't be no end to it this time, is that correct, that we just, until we decide to quit doing it?
Until everybody's through it, you know, I guess the state will dictate.
I'll make a motion to extend COVID alert as described.
All right, Mr. Bricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item is the county administrator item, we'll do claims, Ms. Horn.
You have the claims in your packet, the vote will cash in the general fund after claims is $3,998,426.45. Claims for the month, the early set totals $102,333.32, with current claims totaling Some of the larger ones this time was advanced disposal, $39,592.61. Athelashen Juvenile Commission, first quarter, $55,980. Ergonomic Home, that's 50% deposit for the new dispatch stations at our 911 center, $15,161.98. Hilton's Volunteer Fire Department, first allocation for fiscal year 21, $16,000. Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority, first quarter payment, $552,513.31. And two-way radio for sheriff's office equipment, $15,164.58. So total claims that need to be approved is $949,060.70.
One thing I always look at, on the back of that first page, the graph showing where we were fiscal year 2018, you know, today, so we're about 1.2 mid of where we were this time last year, and so, that's always a good thing. One time, we had to do a loan anticipation, or revenue anticipation note, we'd not be getting through to November or not, so we don't have to do that this year, and I'm glad of it, so.
I'm not complaining about that money, but how did we get some further ahead, obviously? Where'd that money come from?
Uh, we ended the year better than we anticipated, but our reconciliation check for the jail is in here, so that's, that was a little over $800,000.
Okay.
So that's why we're ahead compared to last year.
Good.
Last year, we were paying it out, this year, we got it back.
How much was the reconciliation?
It was a little over $800,000.
So everybody will know, this is a result of doing the Scott Service Program.
Yes.
And I talked to them the other day, there's 48 people, I think, now in the program that's, that's working in it, and so that's about $41 a day per person that we're not having to pay, so getting that money back, and that was what we, we hoped would happen, and it has worked, so hats off to those folks that are working so hard to make that program work. We had to put some money up front to pay them salaries and, and give, you know, give them a push to work all the stuff they needed, and so anyway, it's, it's paid dividends now to get that back, so hats off to them, because the county, the taxpayers in the county will hopefully see the benefit of it too, as we go, um, you know, when we do, do things on down the road, but anyway, I seen that, it's always, I was looking at that bar graph, and it's good to see that where we are compared to where we were just a few years ago. Need a motion to pay the bills?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Bricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any other discussion? Committee one. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so the motion passed, carried. Thank you, ma'am.
The next item I have is the treasurer's equipment request, I believe I put that in your packet as well.
Yes.
It's for a new Remit Plus machine, the price would be $2,775, and would include some servicing as well. And what this machine is for is, it scans the checks and allows them to do those checks electronic deposit. So instead of having to, you know, endorse all those and take them to our banking facility, they can actually scan them and they're, they're done electronically. And that, the current scanner has about to the end of its useful life.
Where'd that come from, the money?
Board contingency, because our budget doesn't have anything that large.
I know it did, but I want somebody to know where it came from, so. And I think it's probably needed, if it'll help there anyway, and I'll forward, make things better and more efficient for that office. All right, so it's $2,800, is that correct?
$2,775.
$2,775.
Do you know if the DMV stop's been done?
I don't know.
I gotta say yes, because she said she's done everything that every other county was doing. I don't think she would fit to, so I'm, I'm assuming, I'm gonna say yes, that they're being done. I haven't seen it, but I'm assuming she said she was doing it.
And my FOIA request stated that as such too, that they're getting done.
I'd like to see, you know, we get that TAC report, that John Rife does every month, we get that showing exactly what he collects. I'd like to see a report like that, while she's collecting through those same, where it's offsets, or whether it's DMV stops, or court action taken, and I wish she would provide that to us, she hasn't. But I'm assuming that she told us she was doing it, I'm assuming she's doing it.
What I would like to see, and I would like for us to discuss, since we're on that topic, and I'm sorry to, to digress a bit, but I would like to see a report from John Rife, perhaps, of how many, of, like, where he sends us this tack before each month, if he has received, what years and information he has received that prior month.
Personal property or real estate?
Both.
But usually, he don't give the personal property until the treasurer allow, when it's been due four years, he gets them for the fifth year.
Right, I do, and I think that's the way that we can do that to, um, 'cause, you know, that ensures that she's supplying, or that the treasurer's office is.
Well, we asked for that, I think we got what we asked for.
We didn't, we asked for that from her office, I'm wondering if we can ask for that from his office as to what they've received.
Is it not in that report, Fred, that he gives us?
He just gives us what he's collected. I'm curious as to, what I'm curious about and interested in seeing is if the information, if he's getting the information he needs to provide it to him.
I can, actually, I won't hear, but I can tell you the answer to that, he's talked before, the answer to that.
I know the answer to that as well, but I would, I was wondering if that.
Well, here, I'll, I'll tell you what my thought was, if he's gonna do the fifth year, getting ready to roll off, and that person owes for the four other years, let him do it out, deal with that one person, but he cannot get that information, he gets the last year's ready to roll off the fifth year, that's when he gets it. So if, in the next year, if they've not paid, he gets that person again for the fifth year of that particular amount. But he can do it all at one time if he had the information, but he doesn't have it.
I would like to know what information he is getting, since we can't get that from the treasurer's office, I would, I was wondering if we would, could get that from his office, maybe. Because, can you ask, maybe, and see if that's something that they would be willing, that he would be willing to provide to us, as, you know, I mean, just to say, okay, during this month, prior to our meeting, this is the information that, you know, was provided to us, whether it's, you know, in the form of a report, if it's in the, just to ensure that he's getting the information he needs to be able to do his job, that we've hired, that the county has hired him to do, that's my concern, you know.
Well, the thing about what he does, it doesn't cost the county anything, he asks his fees on.
He does, but at the same token, we're asking him.
We're hiring him.
We hired him to perform a service.
Yeah.
And I just, I, I, I would like to be able to make sure, that's the only way that I can think of, that we can backcheck the information that's being given to him, since we can't seem to get that through the treasurer's office to us.
Can Mr. Jeter, to answer your question, it looks like we've received $5185 in DMV stop fees since July 1st, so by that, I would assume they are being done, or we wouldn't be collecting a fee.
That would be something John Rife gave him?
I can't tell that, I can just say, well, I can't say how much money's there.
Okay, thank you.
So we have no way in mind if it's the treasurer's office doing, or if it's TAC is doing.
I would assume the treasurer's office, because Mr. Rife, I don't believe that's DMV stops for us.
Okay. All righty. I seen on the report, there is personal property tax he's collecting, so I don't know how, how he does that, if it's through DMV stops, I don't know. I'm glad it's happening, we need to, and, you know, the people that's, that's taking advantage of all the services here, not paying the taxes, I really have an issue with that. All right. Where are we?
Um, next item I have was Route 23 Access Management update.
I don't think they voted on them.
I don't think they voted on them.
Oh, we had, we didn't, they did, she did. Do we have a motion on it, back there?
I'll make the motion that we purchase the equipment to aid in helping the treasurer's office perform the duties of such.
I'll second, thank you.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, or Mr. Bricky made a motion, Mr. Tipton, second. We talked about it, all fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Sally. All right, Ms. Horn.
Okay, Route 23 Access Management, I put this on there because I didn't know that Mr. Mullins was gonna be here to speak about that today, so we can take that off.
Okay.
And I don't believe I have anything else.
Thank you, ma'am, good job. Yeah, they do, I mean, you, you think about all these numbers that we look at, and we look, we approve, we don't approve, whatever, but there's a lot of work that's into that, my hat's off to y'all for what you do, and Amy, and I love you, we're working so hard on this, and it, it, I mean, it makes us look, I get, when we look good, y'all, y'all really do, we appreciate what you do, and so, anyway, we do thank you for what you do, it's hard work. All right, anything else before Mr. Field comes up on the EDA? The East one's gonna relocate Scott County, right? That's what, you don't tell us that?
It's funny.
All right. Just kidding, gotta lie sometime.
Good morning, I'll take the mask off for now.
You're allowed.
Because you can't hear me, well, you're not hearing. Thanks for the opportunity to present today and talk about economic development, I know it's been a while, been through this COVID, still dealing with that, and appreciate y'all's patience and working with all the departments through this, and the business as well. First, I'll talk about designations, of course, and marketing tools, some things we continue to work on, of course, Virginia Enterprise Zone, of course, reminder that zone includes Duffield, US 23 corridor, through Gate City, River City, and Jackson, and Canyon Streets to Engate City, and of course, River City, Riverside, Brockby, Highway 71 to Nichols Span, and also the town of Dunnigan. And that's through the Department of Housing and Community Development, of course, we partner with them on there in this application process, and we were one of the first enterprise zones, they continue to have enterprise zone, and we expanded that a few years ago, and added those other areas. So the board approved 2018 Enterprise Zone, and seen as that's part of the program to a couple of companies earlier this year, and that was $70,008.6, so that's a little bit on the enterprise zone, we continue to work with that annually, and have to do reports to the ECD. Also, TBA Rural Certification, Education Assistance, they, we achieved the designation of TBA Rural Certified Community, and we have to continue to work on that annually as well, so we're presently working with them to evaluate our work plan for economic development, and they will work with us, all of that's free of charge, their consulting fees are free of charge, and they actually hire consultants sometimes to help us as well, so they will do that, and they will assist us also in developing marketing materials for the Duffield area mainly. And Scott County EDA RB loan program, of course, it's through the USDA. And Scott County EDA RBAG loan program, of course, it's through the USDA Rural Development. I know that a lot of y'all were there to hear the Scott County telephone announcement. That was USDA as well funding, but this is also a USDA, and one of the representatives that we worked with, he was attending that event for Scott County telephone, Craig Barberow, and he helps us out of Whistful. But he helped us initially set up this program. To date, we've had 27 loans approved, and that equates to about $500,000, $493,900. That, in effect, is 70 employees for those tourism-related, 17 retail, and six support businesses. That includes one new loan approved in 2020, and we are working on a couple right now that, in different areas in the county, that will hopefully, that'll be getting used later on. Also, we work with Virginia Codependent Economic Development Authority, they have a seed capital grant program, that's, again, that's for small businesses, and that provides grants up to $10,000. It requires matching funds, so they can technically use the RBAG loan as a match to this program, and then they can get the $10,000. So, $10,000 is had from RBAG. So, we've had seven Scott County businesses have received grants through VCD, and we recently approved two support letters from county businesses, and they will consider that at their September meeting later this month, VCD will. Marketing and activity, we continue to work, website, marketing materials, and also, we're working with TBA on the master plan for the Scott County regional business and take part, and that's into work. We've also had seven new prospects this year, and then one prospect visit, and we continue to follow up with our existing leads. So, it's not been slow, we continue to work, a lot of that works electronically, but we continue to work with prospects. And, of course, this is the Duffield area, the park that's there, and we want to continue to work on the size that we have available that are already filled out, and try to attract businesses there, and, of course, in the build as well. Which is the Crook River Tech Center, and we want to continue to try to attract businesses within that facility. And the regional industrial facilities authority of the RFA, we worked with the RFA on an opportunity zone grant. So, we have one opportunity zone that came through the federally designated opportunity zone, but that money, again, flows through the Department of Housing and Community Development, and, or that designation, that's where it came from. So, we're partnering with Lenoysco to get a CDBG grant for a planning on the award up to $30,000, and that's for the region, that's for the Lenoysco region. So, the county's in the region, and the city of Norton, and we will work on our opportunity zones and come up with a marketing prospectus for those zones, and to help us further market it to people that might invest in those zones, and that's what we're looking for, investments in all our localities. And the whole region, we've not really had a lot of investments yet in opportunity zones, but a lot of people have looked, so hopefully, we can get this marketing material together and help us with this. TBA Invest Prep Project, they have total funding on this, and we completed that, that was one of our objectives earlier this year, to complete the project. That was $293,000. Working with Pavil Electric Co-op, Tennessee Valley Authority, and Northeast Tennessee Regional Industrial Development Alliance, also work with Virginia Department of Mission, and of course, us as well. And we paved the road, of course, in the tech park, so that was gravel, so that's a better access point at the end of this. Of course, there's a pop or point of presence, that's for the broadband infrastructure at the end of this, so that helps them access that as well, and we were spending a lot of money on gravel, so...
What's that at?
That's in the tech park, we do, yep. Right past the Crook River Tech, that's the, you see that light pole in the back of that picture, that's the cul-de-sac right there. So, part of that project included design, the TBA helped us design, and helped us with the landscape architect, and, of course, the lighting, they helped us plan those as well, and we work with Pavil Electric Co-op on the lighting, so that helps that whole area there. So, we completed that. Another one that we continue to work with is the David Intermodal Center, of course, DCR manages that, Department of Conservation and Recreation through Natural Tunnel State Park. We continue to work with them on the Virginia Tourism Grants that we actually apply for, since we actually own that at the time. Eventually, Natural Tunnel will take that over, still working with state DCR on that to get that transferred. They're just open Friday through Monday right now, 10 to 6, because of the COVID, and hopefully they will be able to open longer next year. This is gonna be their first full year of opening, and it would've been great to have them open, but we had the pandemic actually hurt all of us. Riverside Development Phase Three, this project, of course, was, we were wanting to additional site at the Riverside Development. That was advertised, and bids were submitted twice, the lowest qualified bid was $1 million over the engineer's estimate. So, we have discussed the project with Virginia Department of Mission, which has some funding in this, and also VCD for a potential extension that will be determined in September, so we would want to get an extension on the Department of Mission. Then we will work also to find additional resources, hopefully through DCD, and maybe some other funds as well, if those are needed. So, we'll work with the engineer to develop a plan for another site, and that, again, that's gonna be like a 7 to 10 acre site. I'll show you, on the right side of the road, behind the bank, is where we have planned, and we've been working to try to get that accomplished, and we haven't done that yet, but still working on it, still need a site, another site here. Then, the other one that told you in January that we were working to complete this, Phase One of this has been completed, which is parking area, working with county staff here, Bill and Frida, and we continue to work with DMME and Appalachian Conservation Corps and the Jefferson National Forest for additional funding for the trail. That was managed to work to make the trail safer going to Delspat, and since the parking area, you still have a lot of people that are visiting, and Delspat, we want to improve and make the trail safer. And I know y'all have been working on some items on that as well, as far as telephone access and things like that for emergency services.
Just a quick question, you don't mind?
Okay.
Would that entail markers and things like that?
Yeah, markers is part of that, of course, trail enhancements, I mean, Appalachian Service Corps, they have a lot of experience in working with natural forest, so they would actually make the trail safer, and they would come up and work with the forest on design to make that safer.
Thank you for that.
No, that's great. I encourage questions. In Bridging the Gap, COVID-19 loan program, when this pandemic first started, we knew that businesses would, you know, suffer from this, and working with VCD, we were able to come up with a loan program, that was our initial step into trying to get relief for businesses. So, that was a $5,000 loan, we had 16 inquiries on the loan program, 11 applications were received, and 11 was approved. So, we had $60,000 amount, $60,000 was allocated, $50,000, $55,000 that has been spent, so we still can do one of those if somebody's interested in the loan program. That's a deferred loan, they'd have to start paying them anywhere of next year, so trying to help the businesses out. And with y'all's help, through the CARES Act funding, the Disaster Recovery Fund Grant, that was allocated on, that was $250,000, through the CARES Committee, 28 inquiries on this, when we had 19 applications, 18 of those were approved, and $250,000 allocated, again, $163,500 spent. So, we're gonna have another round of this, and hopefully get that out soon, and get applications in, and look at those once again, to try to extend the rest of this.
That's what I was gonna ask, what, when are you gonna open that back up? Because I've had some inquiries myself.
I like any time, I think we'll talk about that, in CARES Committee, September 30th was our projection to take the next ones, that's what the EDA board recommended.
Okay, sounds good.
And then, of course, here's just a map of the businesses touched, of course, the Bridging the Gap loan, of course, is in red, and then the Disaster Recovery Fund Grants in black, that's the businesses in the county, that's all over the county that's getting touched by both of those. There are some of the objectives, I talked about those, don't wanna rehash those, but just the Invest Prep, the Stony Creek Project, and the partnership with C Capital, VCD, we've done those. The planning process was, we had that actually planned for May, and working with UVAYS, they were gonna facilitate a planning session with our board, had to cancel all that because all the events were canceled at the college, so we're trying to reschedule that now, they're back in now, so we'll get that rescheduled and get that done, hopefully by the end of the year. And then, of course, y'all have already talked about this, the Lenoysco Regional Small Business Recovery, Business Recovery Assistance, this is for grants, that's $15,000. The, I guess the great thing about this, nonprofits will be eligible for this one as well. The other one was for profit business, this is, you can have nonprofit business as well. So, the applications on the Lenoysco website, these are due, tells you that, I think, September the 24th, that Friday. But it's, that's all that information is on the website. You go back here, 25th, that's Friday. But we can send that information out too, and we'll get that information out from the chamber office, and then we'll get it posted on Facebook and things, so we can get that out. Any questions?
Crook River Tech Center, second floor, is it being rented now?
Second floor, we got Kamatsu there, and they're a part of that facility, so they only have the front part of that facility, and then they've got the front part of the first floor as well. But we're working to try to get other people in there too.
Riverside, we got any prospects coming, businesses?
Yes, yes, we've had, we've talked to some, and hopefully we'll get some soon, I hope.
You talk about preparing the site, and coming in, helping with budget, could you cut the site down?
You could, you could cut the site down, but then, in talking to VCD, is that the best thing to do? Because if you, if you look at Riverside, I mean, if you look at Teletag, for example, T-Tech, their total site was seven acres. They took all seven acres, that whole site. So, if you think about that, so to reduce down further than seven acres, will you attract a business like that? Because it depends on the parking area, I know, because a lot of that's in parking, but it just depends, would that even work, if you went down to five acres or four acres?
You'd view it for seven to 10, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
If you could cut it to seven, and maybe have enough money to go ahead and finish it.
Now, that's a possibility, and I think the engineer's looking at that, to do it. I mean, you probably could do it on the other side, but you would want to do it on the other side of the road too, because you need both sides developed. They're looking at all of that.
One more thing, about the sign down there, we got any landscapes done on it?
No, we haven't had, we need to get that done, you're right. Thanks for the reminder.
I'll leave you on that.
No, that's good.
Any questions for Mr. Gilmore? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
The Eastland's not gonna relocate here, then, I guess? All right. Thanks, thanks, gentlemen. All right, we'll go down to item 18, and we will have a closed session when we get through this part of it. And due to the distancing and everything, what we'll do, we're going to close session, we're gonna use this room, so I hate to ask y'all to leave in a few minutes, but it's where we gotta do it, the room, man, it's not big enough to get everybody six feet apart, so we'll do it in here, and I hate to do that, but we have no choice with it, so anyway...
We'll do a small break before then.
Do we? Okay. We'll do that. Anyway, comments, requests, recommendations, Mr. Jeter?
I've got one. This is for Bill. Bill, I think that you should start visiting sites at least once a week, waste sites and stuff, and up at the landfill, I don't know where you do or not, but I think you need to, to kind of get a hold on, there's a lot of stuff going on at the sites that needs to be looked after, I think. Make sure their grounds are mowed, make sure they're clean, make sure the fences is good, make sure the buildings are up to date and stuff. And one more thing, can this COVID money be used to help? Well, I guess, has River City put in for any of the money? I know each town gets some.
They have.
They put in? Okay. I didn't know where it could, I know there's something going on about the fire department, and I didn't know where any of it could be used for the town, or that, they're trying to update the fire department, but so far, I don't think the town of River City has tried to help any on it, which I think they should.
Some of the requests that the town of River City has sent in have been in for the fire department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got.
All right, Rich Tiff?
Just one thing, and I've already talked to you about it, Bill, when you came up to the Solid Waste Center of Hilton, where some brush needed to be cut, a lot of folks have been complaining about that.
Randall and one of the Scott workers did that issue.
All right, good deal. All right, appreciate it.
How's that?
That's a good response. Love it. And want to appreciate the staff, you know, through the COVID and so forth, you know, our administrator, our assistant administrator, public works director, and all the workers have been here, have been on the ball, have been on the job, have been taking care of business, and so we're grateful to our county for that.
Thanks, sir. Aaron?
I guess I should've thanked VDOT when they was here, but, you know, they did a good job up around Nicholsville, you know, with the roads, you know, with the gravel roads, stuff like that. There's still some problems with the mowing, you know, I mean, they're limited on what they can do, but, you know, I'd like to look into something else, you know, maybe doing some sort of spraying, maybe that could help keep that, the rideaways down a little bit. I know when I was younger, I remember spraying, but I'm sure there's restrictions and things like that. I really think that that could help with some of the situations, anyway. But I, you know, they're doing what they can do, all they can do. The Scott workers, you know, we had a situation over at the Veterans Memorial on 72, VDOT is responsible for that, but due to COVID, you know, they've not been able to do exactly what they're supposed to do, I guess, because of the COVID situation. But the Scott workers went over there, they cleaned it, and we did what they need to do, so I'd like to thank them. That might be something they'll continue to do, I don't know, but we'll just see how that goes, but I'd like to thank them for that. The Scott program is outstanding, you know, Mr. Mann was talking about the savings, you know, that $800,000, you know, that come back to the county, you know, is solely, we can point toward the Scott program, you know, that really helped, helped the county, and, you know, coming into this position, you know, that was one of the big things, was the jail, you know? You know, we've not really talked about the jail all that much, you know, that's a...
My God.
So, but, but, you know, I...
I'm not worried about it.
I'm proud of that, you know, all the, you know, seems like we get stuck on the negative things, and, you know, there are some changes that needs to be made, you know, we need to keep moving forward. But, you know, the cell phone tires, of course, none of them's on yet, you know, having people ask why they're not on, but they got the one up in Nicholsville, you know, it's 100, I think 198 feet tall, you know, the actual structure's up, and so, it's, that's, you know, I'd have never thought... a, you know, I'd have never thought we'd have had a cell phone tire, you know? But that's, that's, that's a good, good thing, a good, good step in the right direction. One thing I'd like to, I wasn't going to mention this, but I'll go ahead and mention it and let you sort of digest it and if you have any input at the next meeting, maybe. I had a call from, you know, I spoke with Frida about this, but I had a call from Roadside Mission Baptist Church. They are, they're located on 71 in the snowflake area before you get to Nicholsville. They, of course, that's where that precinct votes, you know, the people from Big Mox and the people from Taylor Town, they vote. And probably the biggest thing is that the, the school buses come in there and they swap kids, you know, from different areas, you know, like Big Mox and kids, some of them not come to Gate City and some of them go to Wind Springs and they, they swap buses. Of course, that's used every day, five, five days a week, twice a day, you know? They had requested maybe some help on maybe resurfacing their parking lot and I don't know the direction on how to go with that, but they did request me to ask that and I'm, that's what I'm doing. But you all can think about it. I think the school system should have some input too, because you know, they're, they're using that for, and I did ask about the election part of it. I don't know about their, about the school part of it, but the election part of it, that's the only church that they actually, well, the fellowship hall. Of course, that's only, you know, at the most, twice a year. But, but anyway, that's, that's something I'd like for you to think about and maybe we can figure out something. But we need to reach out to the school system too, I think, and see what their thoughts are too. But anyway, everything seems to be going pretty good and appreciate all of you and we'll keep moving forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bricky?
I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to say in a few minutes, I'd like to miss Hood and Danny to give us an update on the Black Gun and Cliff Mountain situation. I've not heard anything, but what I would really like to do right now is to tell some people how much I appreciate them and I think they're relatively ignored and that's our media that shows up every month. And it's, it's hard on us because sometimes I've said things and I thought, oh no, that camera's on, or Lisa's sitting there, but it's good that you're here and it's good that you're here and that it is. Also, in eight months, I found out that some elected offices, boards or constitutional officers seems, it seems like they don't have to answer to anybody or that's the thinking. But with you sitting there and, and our news media that goes out, our videographer, it is going out to the public, so you hear what's going on. And I've heard several times from people on this board that elections, voting has consequences and it does. So, what you're doing is going out to the people that really need to know and they know that what we've tried to do and what we've not been able to do. So, I appreciate you, I really do. Sometimes, you know, we take fixtures for granted and people don't even notice that you're here and I'm not comparing you to a desk or a table or anything, but you're, you're permanent fixtures here and, and as far as I'm concerned, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Miss Ed?
Just one quick sponsor with regard to what you said before I forget it. We're still streaming, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the media, so the folks can bring it up, what's on YouTube at Scott County?
Scott County, E D A, Forest Supervisors Meeting.
Okay, very good. And should we mention about what you told us?
Sure.
It's all, also can be streamed at, help me out here.
Heritage TV's YouTube site.
Okay, Heritage TV YouTube site. Okay, very good. So, you got a couple of options there on streaming and folks have been able to get our Board of Supervisors meeting and I just wanted to put that in there, because a lot of folks don't, may live in an area where they don't get Scott County cable TV and so they can't get it, you know, TV that way. The only way they can get it is through YouTube. So, you got a couple of options here. Yep? Yep?
All right, thanks, sir. Miss Ed?
I have not forgotten the people on the Black Gun and constant communication with them. Last Friday, we met with Leno Whisco Chairman was there and Delegate Kilgore, Senator Pilliam cannot come, but he's in a representative. And Leno Whisco is working to try to get some funding to help these people. And Duffield Fire Rescue continues to take water to them. And in recognition of what the Duffield Fire Rescue has done, I would like to suggest that the board give them, recognize them with a monetary gift of $2,000.
Ms. Hood and I discussed that a few days ago and so we, we do fund our fire departments and this is on and beyond what they would normally do. And so, I, we talked about it and I said, you know, we probably need to help them out some because it is costing them to do that, to provide water. That's not part of their job, but they're doing that through, through an emergency service that the, that the fire department is doing. And so, anyway, I, and I support doing, doing something. We discussed the amount and I thought, you know, if we did $2,000, that I think it would be, because they're going on and beyond what the fire departments usually do by doing that. And so, but anyway, Ms. Arns, you want, you need to, you're looking at it kind of funny, but.
I am, I'm sorry.
But anyway, we did discuss this and listen, you know, if we can do anything to help those people and, but then, and then help those that's helping them.
Yes, yes, we need to do that.
And so, anyway, and we talked about it, about an amount, I said, you know, if we did $2,000, that would go a long way at helping them, because those trucks go up that mountain, holla low water, the fuel, with the volunteers, they're not getting paid, but the truck and the fuel and what they're doing, it's admirable on their part to help these people.
Any word on the National Guard yet?
No, Senator Pilliam's office is supposed to contact them. I gave all the information to his representative last week and Senator Pilliam used to be part of the group here in, in Gate City, I think, so I haven't heard anything yet though.
So, Ms. Hood, you'll make that form of a motion to approve that from our contingency fund to fund, to help the fire department out some of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, she's made it in the form of a motion to donate this extra $2,000 to the Duffield Fire Department to help them with their expenses related to this water delivery and other things are done, so I'm sure they'll appreciate it. So, any discussion or if not, she's made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, everyone say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so anyway.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And she's, she's been, she's a new supervisor, she's, she's not as new as she once was, but she's doing really good. All of you that's new on this board are doing great and so it's, it really has been great, but, but you're getting hands-on experience dealing with stuff and you're seeing people face to face. They take you in their house and show you the washing machine, they bought a wringer tie and carry rainwater to wash, do their laundry. How many else is doing that? So, that's what they're doing to cope with this and so we do this stuff for the fire department, I think it's a good thing. Anything else, Miss Ed?
No, that's all.
Ms. Bricky?
You know, I don't ever want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to all the people that are here, you know, Ms. Kegley, Ms. Tina, Ms. Frida, Mr. Bill. And as Mr. Bricky said, our fantastic news media staff. I love that, that's great. You are the unsung, unsung heroes for us, getting the message out. Just a couple of things, you know, I mean, I, I said this last time, it's money and taxes are a burden for me. I mean, it's a thorn in my side. I'm with, I'm with you when you say a thorn in your side. I mean, it, it bothers me as a citizen, as a board supervisor's member, as a tax-paying citizen who regularly pays my taxes, that we're having issues collecting out, you know, with the collection piece of it. It bothers me and I have put in a few FOIA requests and have gotten, you know, information, some information back. I do feel like we need a planned path forward for how we are, they are, how she's going or how the treasurer's going to collect that tax. I've yet to see that. I know she's not responsible to give us that and I know she's not accountable to us, I realize that, but we are a team here in Scott County and we are expecting her to, or we are expecting that office to fund the county. That's how we fund the things we're funding, is through the taxpayers, through the treasurer's office and the tax collection, but I will get off my soapbox and I have done a few things, you know, with, like Marshall said, with the roads, things. Haven't heard anything, but did get some emails back from Jeffrey this morning, so I'll see what he has said and that kind of thing, so. I do appreciate everybody that works, does all the stuff behind the scenes. Thank you all. This has been a fantastic learning experience. Like you said last time, it's not drinking from the fire hose, it's opening the fire hydrant sometimes, but that's okay, because I've really enjoyed it and I really appreciate each one of you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Y'all got your feet wet, you're new ones. I remember the first, first training that we had in 2012 in Richmond, one of the things a guy said, it stuck with me, he said, you know, admirable y'all to do this, you don't get paid a lot to do it, but you do it for four years, if you do it the second term, you need your head examined. So, this, some of us is third term, second, third term, so anyway, but it, you've got to want to do it and to make the county better and that's what our, my goal is here in this county all up. All the comments I have, the one thing that happened, the $12 million that's going to be allocated for the broadband to come to the county in over a five-year period, $9 million bid from the government, $3 million from, from the phone company to do that. And folks, that is a, that is a tremendous, tremendous step forward for our county. And the phone company, they have been a partner on so many things to help directly, I mean, cutting costs from setting poles, you know, to get power to certain places that we need and they would do that. But they've been a tremendous partner. They, one lady puts stuff to me on social media, I tried to answer it, she liked my answer, she deleted my answer. So, I wonder what, what else is going on by, you know, the county, you know, they're getting money and what do we see to, you know, from it when they get these grants and stuff? You try to answer, they delete your answer, but that's okay. But anyway, with that, and I did get a chance to talk to Congressman Griffith about Black Gun and he said, this is exactly the perfect opportunity for you to talk to Betty Brant. She was there and I talked to her and they took my name and stuff and they're, they're going to put, put us in a direction and he seemed to think that we can get some money, emergency type funds for those people up there on Cliff Mountain and Black Gun Lane. So, hopefully, it was good, good timing too and so that worked out really good to be able to do that with those people down there when we met, had that announcement Monday. We had the meeting with Ms. Hood there at Leno Whisco and she mentioned folks that was there. And the one thing that they said, and I don't know if we all just talked about it, was when we declared that local emergency was, it got the attention that we need. It got more than I thought it would, to be honest with you. You know, when Channel 5 and me today were there and everybody was there and the news media was wanting to, you know, to put some stuff out there, the county papers and stuff did. So, I think we're on the right track to help these people to get water. And so, I can't go one day without it. They've been since November of last year without it. And so, it's been a, it's been a tough, a tough hike, tough, tough road for them to travel, but anyway, they're, they're so appreciative of this board and they've made abundantly clear how much they appreciate the action that, that we've taken. Again, I'll say what Ms. Hood did, she, she went up there with an olive branch in the form of gallons of water to them. She took it to them and they really appreciate the thoughts behind you doing it, because I said it before, that's what happened and anyway, they appreciated that. Anyway, that's all I have on this and I appreciate everybody. We do have, I said, closed session, we'll take a break, go to the restroom, whatever, but we'll be going to a closed session, anything before we close this part of the meeting. All right, we will adjourn this part of the meeting to a closed session in a few minutes and I'll read the statement and I'll do it in a little bit when we come back, so it's in closed session. And we will be doing it in here, like I said, we'll do it.